I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if you could please take a moment of silence and please remember all the people and the things that are going on in our world today, pray for some peace, please. Please rise for the flags, Lou.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administrations Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Garino?
Mr. Garino is going to be absent.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Dr. Anamone, your report?
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our February meeting. We do a, we're going to do a West Milford--
It's March.
March. Excuse me. We're, I'm reading this here. We're going to do our winter sports recap. We had five student athletes this year, had wonderful seasons in their respective sports. So we invited them and their families to come to a board meeting today to get a small token of appreciation, just a certificate from the Board of Ed and from the administration. One of our students last minute had to cancel, but I'm going to read his accomplishments first because he's not here, but we will get him his certificate. So Shane Yodeis is one of our bowlers. He advanced to the state finals as an individual, something only 100 bowlers in the entire state can do. Shane finished right in the middle of the 100, but was an incredible asset throughout the bowling season, who finished as the boys' independence division champions. Not only was he a strongly competitive bowler, he assisted younger bowlers new to the team. His calm personality set a standard for the sport and how all athletes should behave. He strived to do his best, but understood the value of the entire team working together. He will go on to do great things. Once again, congratulations, Shane Yodeis. And now for our wrestlers. Colin Manier, sophomore, West Milford High School, wrestler, I think 126 pounds, 126 pounds, 33 wins, District 3 champion, county finalist, North Jersey record athlete of the week. He tied the single-season techful record for West Milford Wrestling with seven and is a state qualifier. win 40 matches in a single season, first West Milford wrestler in the history of the school, eighth place in the state at 106 pounds, Dover Tournament champ, Passaic County champ, District 3 champ, and he broke the single-season takedown record for West Milford High School. Ben Marchetto is also a sophomore, so we're looking forward to two more great years from both Colin and Ben. Ben, come on up. Tanner had a truly record-breaking, unbelievable winter season. He set goals for himself and accomplished all of them, and then some. His hard work, dedication, and perseverance brought an improvement of distances in the shot put throughout the season. Tanner was the Passaic County champion, the North One State sectional champion, a state group and meet of champions shot putter, and to clinch his section title, oh, to clinch his section title, he blew away the school record. His 53 feet, 10 inches throw at sectionals earned him a spot in the record books and team MVP. A truly remarkable season for a truly remarkable young man, Tanner Christie. Delaney reached her 100th career win this season and ended her high school career with a record of 142 wins and only 29 losses. She qualified for the individual state tournament and made it to the second round. She ended up being ranked 13th in the entire, in the entire state for a girl's saber. She also helped her team play second in the state for a girl's saber. Delaney was undefeated in Passaic County and in District One. She was, is a three-time captain and a three-time Passaic County champion. Leadership comes naturally to Delaney. She was the leader of this program for the past three seasons. She wanted to win individually, but she always wanted her team to win and help in every way to make that happen. She is fencing at Dennison University next year, and there is no doubt that she will do amazing things there. Delaney Brown. Okay, before we move to the SEL Day recap, you guys don't have to stay. You're more than welcome to, but we won't be offended if you leave because we're going to do our audit shortly thereafter, so we know you.
Congratulations.
So a few weeks ago, moving on to our next bullet point here, the SEL data, social emotional learning. We did SEL Day a few weeks ago on Friday, March 11th, district-wide, K through 12, students and staff. So I asked Dr. McQueen if she could give us a brief synopsis. That was one of our focus points this year, social emotional learning, not just for students but for staff as well.
And I believe it's one of our strategic goals still, where we're going to be continuing with it, but I think it's the perfect time to talk about it because, as you can see from the sports and these, you know, wonderful athletes, that social emotional interaction, interactions coming out of the pandemic and just kind of getting back to normalcy in some way is so wonderful for our students, for our staff, for, for us, obviously even sitting around the table. So coming out of the pandemic, we did participate in the Global SEL Day, which was on March 11th. That was a time really for advocating, supporting, and showcasing social emotional learning. As a district, we took the chance to be able to really showcase a lot of our programs and what we're doing and then start some new things on that day as well. So our school social workers at the elementary building and our psychologists at the elementary level were in the classrooms running lessons. Our middle school and high school, actually, I know Mr. Trent Acosta was here, through the PE department, we made sure through Project Adventure and physical education that they were highlighting and making a focus that day on social emotional learning. We asked teachers to kind of carve some time out in their day to focus on it. I'm sure many of you are on Twitter, you'd be able to then see, a lot of people were tweeting that day or retweeting information out. That didn't even cover all of it, but I just want to thank kind of our mental health providers as well as our teachers and everybody for participating because it was kind of a great day to launch, once again, and keep the ball rolling. You guys know as a board, we've been talking about that from the professional development day. So then to actually, you know, that, that day was more focused on professional development for teachers. This gave us an opportunity to actually work with the students, so it was a successful day.
All right. Thank you, Dr. McQueen, and we also have another little SEL bonus for us, for our staff coming later on in the agenda. As you can see, there's a motion to amend the calendar for this year. The school calendar, usually the last three days of school are early dismissal days for students, and the last day of school, the last one day of school, is an early dismissal day for staff. So we're going to, I'm making a recommendation that the last three days this year are going to be early dismissal for students and staff. So they'll have that Thursday, Friday, of going into like mid or late June to get home a little bit early, finish up with their grading and do whatnot, so I think they have enough coffee mugs and enough pens that we give to them on Staff Appreciation Day that they might appreciate this just a little bit more. So this is something we are continuing to focus on, not just for our students but for our staff as well. All right, also a handout for the board members. A few, I guess a few, about two months, three months ago now, we finished our strategic planning at Macabre School with the community, with the board, with the administration, teachers, parents, community members, town council members showed up, and we've been working on our action plans for the past couple of weeks. These, this is a living document, so it will change between now and 2027, but these are some of the area goals that we're going to focus on. The timelines are pretty broad, so we'll tackle some of this in September, some the following September, some the following September after that. So the five-year strategic plan, these are some of our major activities. We hope to accomplish them all, and I would imagine at some point we'll be adding to this or maybe editing this and revising this as we go forward. So it's a living document, we'll get it up on our website, and if edits are made over time, we'll certainly put those up on the website as well. So thank you again for the strategic planning process. It was a well worthwhile effort. We're looking forward to the future with that. And our student representative, Ms. Weiss?
Hi, everyone. So as the end of the year is approaching, we have many exciting events. Our junior prom was held this Friday at Casa Bianca. Our senior prom is going to be held at the Tides on June 2nd. Seniors are beginning to commit to their future decisions, and our spring sports are starting up this week. I know La Crosse has their first game, girls and boys, tomorrow, so we're wishing them good luck. On March 7th, the Students Council held their first big fundraiser of the year. For the first time ever, we held a volleyball tournament to raise money for our town Special Olympics team. We had students sign up, their teams, and they had to pay to participate. And we, our goal was to raise $1,500, and with all the support we got from that night, we ended up well exceeding our goal and raising $2,200 for our Special Olympics team. So that was really successful. And that's all I have for today, so thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thanks for coming, it's good to see you. And that sounds like you had quite an event there, thank you. Director of Education, Mr. Novak. We're doing a presentation.
I just have a brief, a brief presentation. I know we have the orders, we've got a, got a long night ahead. I just wanted to take a moment to give you a little glimpse of, we've talked about Conker Math Training quite a bit this year, the, one of the professional development processes that our staff is undertaking this year. It's, although we are using some of our COVID recovery funds to support this initiative going forward for the next year or two, it is still something supported by our budget, so I think it's also a good opportunity to share with you some of the things that we're, that we're doing. So we're in year one for, for Conker Math. Conker Math is a location in Paquannick. The trainer there is named Nancy Schultz. She's been a well-renowned trainer in Northern New Jersey and the state of New Jersey for, for many years. I just pulled a brief, a little clip from National Council of Teachers of Mathematics to support the Journal of Research in Mathematics Education, and just a little bit of, little bit of research to support what we're doing. I am going to read this, bear with me. "Research suggests significant effects on teachers of mathematics and the process for learning mathematics methods that use manipulative materials as the primary means of learning." Basically, manipulative materials, hands-on objects, 3D shapes, tiles, fraction shapes, anything that a student can, can touch and feel and visualize. "The effects investigated were changes in trainee desire to use, ability to use, and actual use of manipulative materials in teaching. Changes in trainee desire or actual behavior with respect to teaching in a learn-focused manner. Changes in trainee understanding of elementary mathematics. Differences between learning in a concrete, physical way and learning in a symbolic, abstract way. And changes in trainee attitudes of enjoyment of and feelings of competence in teaching mathematics." So a long-winded way of saying that teachers who are trained in specific strategies for teaching best practice mathematics not only teach in a better, best practice way, but they also enjoy and feel a little more confident in, in doing so. Very rarely have I seen a professional development initiative that has had so much widespread support from the staff members who were in, in the process of the training. And I think that is just a testament to the quality of the training and the process that they're, that they're undergoing. This is from a little, little quote from Mind Research Institute, is actually the parent company of ST Math, which is a process we put in place last year for our kindergarten through second grade students. "Math is not a spectator sport. It's not a body of knowledge. It's not symbols on a page. It's something you do, it's something you play with, and something you do." So I'm just sharing a few photos with you of our training in action with our, our staff doing these things with our, with our students. So here's some examples in third grade. So our, our teachers who are in training right now are third grade, fourth grade, and Algebra I in the middle school. Some samples of, of third grade students using, you know, physical manipulatives to act out or visualize the, the concept that they're being taught. So on the left, you see the, you know, the representations of, of blocks to translate to some of the things that they're doing in, in the textbook series. Another one in the corner, those students on the bottom right are playing Beat the Calculator. One student hands up the fact, one student has a clipboard to write it down, the other student has a calculator. So the challenge for the student without the calculator is to beat the calculator. So that progresses, you know, it's a nice little fun activity. And it, you know, one, one of the students do need to learn how to use the calculator, you know, that's a, that's a skill in itself, so it's, you know, they don't know they're learning right there. They're just having fun, you know, playing with their friends in class. In between the two slides, I just wanted to highlight what actually they're getting in the sessions that they're doing this year. So year one, we have third and fourth grade. These units, so to speak, are representative of the major standards, the major New Jersey student learning standards at those grade levels for, for those grades. Numbers and operations in base 10, operations algebra thinking, measurement and data. You can see some, you can see some commonality between them, geometry is involved. Measurement and data is always something that's, you know, very important for our students in these ages. The next slide shows the progression into fourth grade, similar, you know, in, so many times you could go into a math classroom and you could see students just practicing the classic algorithm, like many of us grew up doing. We see a stark change in our third and fourth grade classrooms and our Macabre and Algebra classes where the manipulatives are out frequently, that students are now conceptualizing what they're learning rather than just being told, you know, this is how you do it, now repeat. Now they're understanding why they're doing it. I know many of us, even myself as a parent, in our Go Math program over the years, there's been a lot of those questions that ask you to show your work or explain your thinking. This process is better equipping our students to do that because it's not always writing two sentences to explain your thinking. It's drawing a picture. It's drawing a visual representation of the math that you learned. We're seeing, we are seeing the difference in our, in these classrooms already with the, you know, the dedication of our staff who are not only going to the training and being active participants, but excited to go back into the classroom and try it out. We've been supporting them with materials and getting them everything that they, they need to do it. This is, the next slide is just a breakdown of what our year one looks like for our Algebra I, like I said, Algebra I Macabre teachers. Modeling with linear equations, inequalities, quadratic modeling, modules ABC, other nonlinear graphs. So it's very challenging, you know, very, very challenging content and not something that you have typically seen with the use of manipulatives in our classrooms in the past. Now, now we're seeing this type of process taking place since the training. So this is a, this is, these are pictures from one scene, you may have seen this if you follow Mr. Citro on Twitter, where they, you know, showed that multiplying binomials using algebra tiles. A binomial is a expression with two parts of expression, as you see, like 5 plus 4x. So multiplying 5 plus 4x times 3 plus 2x is being represented by the student. So if you look to the right, that's the student acting out the model for that expression. On the document camera, you see him standing at, in the center picture, and the students in the room are following along. So the students are now not only internalizing it and doing it themselves, they're turnkeying some of this work and being able to, you know, teach and prove to their peers what they're, what they're learning and helping each other out. That's one of the things we know and a lot of our, you can see in our strategic plan, our goals in cooperative learning, students can learn as much from each other as they can from our staff when they're, when they're put in the right situations. So those are the things that we're, we're, we're working towards. What's next? So this is what our plan for next year looks like. We're going to continue with year two for third, fourth, and Algebra I Macabre. And year one, we had the entry of first grade, second grade, fifth and sixth, Algebra I in our high school, combined group of geometry for both our few Macabre and Geometry teachers and our Geometry teachers at the high school, and then year one for Special Education in Encore K5. When I say Special Education Encore K5, it does not mean our sixth through 12 Special Education teachers are not, are not involved in that. They would be involved where it says geometry for Macabre in high school, our Special Education in-class support teachers, in-class resource teachers would also be participating in that. Again, we were able to, you know, if you go back to this slide, I was only able to do this, these two, these two classes along with the four Algebra teachers this year because it was based primarily on our local tax, local, our local budget, property tax budget. Next year, I'm able to elevate our plan because we can take advantage of the ESTR funds that are specifically dedicated for professional development coaching. So we're able to, you know, leapfrog our goals by a year and bring in more grade levels, and we can get to year two for, year two or completion for the following school year, the 2023, 2024 year will be, will be in pretty good shape for completing this process. So I just want to give you a little, that's all I have, just want to give you a little glimpse of, of the great work that our teachers are doing.
Thank you.
I also had a, just one more, it was more of an announcement type of thing. We've talked about Linkit. I feel like every, every time I'm, I'm here, we talk about Linkit in some regard. Linkit reports for kindergarten through fifth grade students will be coming home on Thursday afternoon, and Mr. Winston and I are in the process of preparing the, there's a parent portal in Linkit, so we're in the process of getting all of our families a username and password so that parents can log in. You don't have to wait for, once, once the parent portal process is established, you won't have to wait for the reports to be printed, you'll have access to the reports. A parent or a student will have access to the reports as they are, as they are made available, so we're, we're excited for that. This will probably be the last time we send home a paper report for our elementary students as everyone in the district will have access to the parent portal going forward from this point, once we have it established for, for middle school and high school. So that's a, that's a good development for everyone having access.
Thank you. Did anyone have any questions about the House? Special reports and correspondence, this is Francisco?
Hi, thank you. Tonight, we're finally going to have our annual budget presentation. It's been delayed, normally we have it in December, but it was delayed significantly because the state--
The audit, right?
Oh, yeah. I guess my brain is still in budget mode. Yeah, audit.
We're on, we're on.
I'm sorry.
It's February, I'm sorry.
It was March. I caught that one. Yeah, I think we're tired. Anyway, our audit from June 30th of 2021 is being presented tonight by Mr. Ferry and Ryan Cleary. It was delayed because the state will edit some additional components that they did not have available, and so everything was pushed back until March. So at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Ferry and Mr. Cleary explain the annual audit. Everyone received their books. We had to change the acronym.
Yes. A-C-F-R.
A-C-F-R or something like that. I don't know.
Well, thank you so much for having us tonight. So as I mentioned every year, you receive two documents. One is the actual A-C-F, A-C-R-F, I can't remember anyway, it's CAFRA. The CAFRA report, which is your financial information, which is the thicker book. The other one is the Auditor's Management Report, which is the thinner book. So the, the A-C-F, sorry, screw that. A-C-F-R is an extremely complicated document. As Barbara mentioned, the state has these governmental accounting standard board numbers, which we have to put in here, which account for accrual of, of pension and other copy and other post-retirement benefits, and those numbers didn't come out until late, so we got until March 15th to issue the report. It just makes the auditing job really fun because everything is due in March for municipalities too. So it's, 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 we're almost ready for the next audit, the, you know, as of June 30th. But the CAFRA has three different fund balances. One is on Exhibit C1, which is the budgetary basis, which is the way the budget was, is presented by the board. It's the information that you use to prepare the budget, and it's probably the only schedule I think I would like the board to concentrate on. It shows the budgeted revenues, how they came in on the expenditure side. It shows the budget-- It shows the budgeted expenditures and how they were expended and what was left over. It also on the bottom shows a recapitulation of your fund balance. The other fund balances are skewed by adjustments for, for accrual basis, which is Exhibit C1, which includes your bonds payable, your fixed assets, appreciation expense. And again, those numbers aren't even used to present the, or prepare the budget. So a few years ago, and that Cafra, by the way, Exhibit C1 is only one year of financial information. And a few years ago, I was actually here and a board member asked me, well, you know, why can't we have it comparable? And, and we're given this reporting model by the state. So I said, you know, next year I'm going to prepare a document showing all the information for prior years. So that's, I don't know, Barbara, you gave everybody this schedule? So what I, so we basically started this in 19, um, 2017. And then I bring, I've been bringing these, these numbers forward every year. And actually I started being that you asked, I figured everybody else in my, that I do for school boards would want the same information. So I actually prepared this for each one of my districts, but you guys were the first ones to actually ask. And I think it was great, actually it was a good comment and it makes a lot of, makes sense. So the top part is your fund balance and your fund balance is made up of multiple components. And what the top part does breaks them down into different components. So if you look on the, on the right-hand side, the second column from the right, that's your June 30th fund balance in its different components. The first number is 2,038,000, which is your capital reserve account, which are for capital expenditures, which are bigger than what you would put in your budget, but smaller than a referendum. You have a maintenance reserve basically for maintenance. And then this year being 21, I always talk about 21, this year being the year I audit, which would be 2021, being with, being that we, you know, with COVID and all the additional expenditures and, and issues, the state allowed the boards to go to 4% for their unrestricted fund balance. The unrestricted fund balance is the maximum amount you could keep. Prior years, it's been capped at 2% and it's a formula. And it's actually in the AMR in the back. But this year they allowed the school districts to go to 4%. And I, I kind of strongly recommended that the districts use that 4% number. It gives you a lot more flexibility. So anything else over that 4% is considered excess surplus, which basically goes into the 20, in this year, 20 for 21, it's going to go into your 22, 23-year budget as taxpayer offset. It's going to reduce the amount of tax levy that goes into your budget. So that number was $2,092,000. We had excess surplus from the previous years that are going into the, actually the budget year that we're in right now, the 21, 22-year budget. And that number was 2,971. In this year, there was a governmental accounting standard board, number 84, that said, changed all the definitions of the student activity fund and the unemployment account. And they changed it saying that we believe the unemployment account belongs in the general fund, not in a trust fund. And they also changed all the student activity funds and put those into the special revenue section of the audit. So you can see this year is the first year we had the unemployment account put in there. That was $958,000. You had year ending conferences of 543,000. What that basically is, is purchase orders as of June 30th that weren't paid out until either July or August. So that money's taken out and held aside because we know those bills are going to be paid. And then what you're left with is your 4% unassigned fund balance of 3,807. And if you look on the right-hand side, you can see that that 4% number, it went up from 1,755 to the 3,807. So that was an increase of 2,51,000. And again, that was the excess money, the extra 2% number. On the bottom shows you comparative information for your revenues. And I didn't break them out. I just broke them out between local, state and federal sources. So you can see the 2020 versus 2021 and the excess or, excess or increase or decrease on the right-hand side. Same thing with capital expenditures. I'm saying, sorry. Same thing with general expenditures and capital, and capital outlay expenditures. And you had a charter school. So you can see the increase or decrease there. So you can see that we started the year with $2,185,000. We had to make a prior period adjustment for, I'm sorry, we started the year with 9,938. We had to make a prior period adjustment for that unemployment account. And we ended the year with 13,012,188, which again refers back to the top of the sheet. So that is the general fund. On the next page, I gave you a quick analysis of your debt service, starting from the year 2017 to 2021. So our bonds were 6,888. As of 17, we ended the year with 5,125. So you can see that we're paying down or you're paying down your debt. The rest of the audit is your, is your special revenue funds, which are for all your grants. So you really can't do much with that. The other section is your, your food service fund, which I'm not even going to talk about because with COVID, all the numbers are skewed from the previous year. So it is what it is. Everybody pretty much got a free lunch. We tried to give out all the lunches we could to anybody and everybody. So it's not a normal year. So you can't really compare, comparing apples and oranges with the previous year to this year. So that's all I have unless anybody has any questions on the financial aspect.
This is a great one.
It's good. You like that? Yeah. Um, so Ryan has been the senior auditor manager with, with our firm and he specifically heads up Wes Mulford. So there were two comments or recommendations. So Ryan's being that he heads up the audit team. He's, I'm going to let him do his part. Ryan?
Okay, thank you. So besides the financials, we do come in and check in on some.
Can you move closer to the microphone, please?
Sure. We do come in and check in on some things that may affect the financial statements, like the internal controls of the board office, the compliance with federal state grants. We do look closely at what's going on in the cafeteria from year to year. So at the end of the day, we come up with this second report that I mentioned, the auditor's management report. And we had two items that we felt we needed to report on. On a scale of one to 10, they're, they're very minor, you know, maybe a two. But the first one is that there were differences in the DRT RS report, which it reports on all the students' transportation status as of October 15th of 2020, the 2020, 21st school year. I think on some 2,100 kids transported, there were six exceptions and it might've had to do with the timing of when these children's IEPs were updated. The, the other exception that we found were within the same report, the numbers of kids that were reported as receiving aid in lieu instead of transportation were not in agreement with what the school registers were reporting. So a couple of small differences. Unfortunately, our hands are kind of tied when we find these exceptions in our samples. We need to include them in the report and it triggers a comment or recommendation. But otherwise, our job is made very easy by the board office and their staff. They're very professional and accommodating and so we don't really have anything else that we need to bring to your attention.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
So I just want to mention that this is my last audit presentation. I am resigned from the auditing firm after 39 and a half years with the firm. Charles Ferrioli, who's been the auditor here for a million years, hired me back in 1982. A smart man. I've been with Chuck and, and the firm for 39 and a half years. So I'm hanging up my auditing coat and pursuing a chief financial officer job in a municipality. So I only have to concentrate on one budget, one financial statement. And yeah, it's going to be a lot smoother. Like Chuck and the rest of the partners trained me over all the years. I trained Ryan the same way I was trained and the rest of the staff. So moving forward, Ryan's going to be moving as manager. He'll be taking over the audit, even though he's been, you know, here taking, taking charge and, and, and training the staff like I trained him. He's training the new staff and the world moves on. But I'd like to thank the board for all the years of their confidence with me and the firm. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I do remember when you were first started here.
Pee-wee.
You were like Ryan.
Yeah, Ed Vogel was my.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, Board Secretary.
Yeah.
He trained me a little bit too. He was.
Congratulations and best wishes.
Right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck in your new position.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara, we have something else under your report as far as minutes?
Yes, we have minutes from the February meeting, February 22nd meeting, regular and executive session.
Okay, I need a motion for the minute.
I move to accept minutes presented in this agenda.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah.
President's report. Under my report tonight, I, it's, I'm actually going to let Debbie O'Brien handle part of it. Debbie and I went to a meeting last night with the state county, different state county schools in regard to the funding for PCTI. It came last minute through Dr. Anamone. It came on Monday for superintendent and board of ed members to go. So we went last night and Debbie is doing the, Debbie's been doing legislative, so I, I think that Debbie can take that on when we get to legislative. But we did go. It was very interesting. There's going to be some conversations now and I think there, we're kind of, I guess we would say it's kind of like a committee that's been started and we're getting some information together, some that we, some common goals that we share. And I, I think, I think it was a good start and for some information, for some fact finding. Other than that, that's all I have for my report. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on the agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes. Then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public, all members of the public speaking during this public comment trend, comment period are asked, wow, I'm having a hard time with this tonight, asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. This is not, the board is not responsible and is not liable for comments made by members of the public. Would anyone like to speak on their public comment?
Seeing none, would like to post public comments.
Need a motion for public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, just make a couple edits to the agenda. On page four, education resolution number five, there's an overnight field trip to see, this is the annual pen relays. It's under number of school days missed. It says three, it should say two. We no more than two school days missed there. And then on page seven, personnel student affairs resolution number 15. We have a vehicle aide, we have a substitute vehicle aide we can add. Name is Steven Manahan. It's a substitute vehicle aide. Last name is M A N A H A N. And then on page eight, personnel student affairs resolution number 17. This is a transfer of assignment. The head custodian stipend is the incorrect number. The salary is correct. The head custodian stipend should be 5,429, $5,429. On page eight, resolution number 17, transfer of assignment. Okay. And then lastly, we'd like to pull one resolution under policy. That's page 14. Policy number one, we're going to pull that and send it back to committee for April. And then that's it.
Okay. So I need a motion to adopt the agenda before you.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda presented, the changes just mentioned by Dr. Anamone.
Need a second?
I just have a question. Dr. Anamone, I asked you to add student affairs to executive session.
Okay, we could, yes, we're going to do that. When we read the resolution, I have that down already.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the amendment was, the agenda was printed already by the time we had spoken.
Okay, thank you. I, I need a second for the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Education, Mrs. Dyer.
Okay, I move to approve items one through eight. Oh, sorry, one through seven.
Second. Discussion? Anyone have anything on items one through seven on education?
Yes, on number one, the school calendar, can we take the vote until after executive session?
So you.
Second.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you want a table?
Right. Thank you.
The motion's made by Terry, seconded by Kate. Is that a voice vote or is it? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay. So now we're moving to through, two through seven, correct? Any other discussion on the motions? If not, vocal?
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Please remember to turn on your mics.
It is on.
No, I can hear Linda, but I can't hear anybody else.
Do, do all of you have your mics on?
On.
Okay. Personnel, uh, student affairs. Uh, Debbie, could you move that because Ray's not here tonight? Sure, I'd like to move items one through thirty under personnel student affairs.
Second.
Discussion? It's items one through thirty.
Thirty, okay.
Can I just say the fishing club looks fun?
The fishing club looks really fun. I think that's awesome. I think there's a lot of kids in West Milford or any town that are really gonna enjoy that. Yay.
Okay. And, any other discussion?
I also wanted to comment on the fishing club. Um, I've been, I've worked in other high schools that have the fishing club and I've gotten numerous grants and lawyers would come in every day. Everyone would wonder what the packages is of fishing poles donated to them. And I did share some of the, the one specific program with Dan is called, um, Hooked on Fishing, Not on Drugs, in the state of New Jersey. And they have a lot of resources and I think that that is, can also be a club and a prevention activity. Um, so teaching kids a lifestyle of finding other activities.
It actually is a sport.
Majorly.
Sporting fishing.
Yes.
Is a true sport.
Yes, it is. Any other?
That's very proud.
Any other discussion? If not, uh, vocal bar?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
That concludes personnel student affairs. Thank you. Mr. Stillman, could you do operations and finance, please?
I would like to move one through six.
Second. Any discussion? Kate?
Um, did someone explain number three?
Yes, it was in the notes. Um, we are looking at a feasibility study to replace the trailer down at the transportation yard. The, um, driver's trailer and the office trailer. Um, we have concerns that, um, they're very old and in disrepair. And so we'd like to know, because of the wetlands involved, what can be done and what we can put there.
Any other discussion? Questions?
Yeah, I have a question on number four.
Um, I, never mind. I remember now. Never mind. I'm done.
I have one on number four. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, is there a date that this has to be signed by? Do we have to do it by June? Do we have to do it by July?
We run the summer program there, don't we? Highlander?
Yeah. Um, okay, so my thoughts are, we have discussed publicly. Multiple board members have said that they were in agreement to talking about a utilization study. So I, I would like to, I mean, three and four, I think, would both be things discussed in a utilization study. So if that was something that we were gonna do this spring, I was wondering if we could hold off on those.
Well, four is gonna be for the academy. If we, we don't,
No, four, yeah, four, I think that's,
Well, three and four, I would hope, would be discussed in a utilization study if that was something that we,
Utilization study is not a building that would be included with, because students don't inhabit it.
Yeah, it wouldn't cover the transportation lot. This is for our drivers and for our office staff there, the,
And, and there are too many other things that are involved with an engineering study because of permitting and wetlands and other restrictions that we may have. So one does not go with the other.
It's a, this is a replacement. This is to be looking at a replacement of the, the driver's trailer, which is their, actually their private area.
And the office trailer.
Okay. And we're combining one of them. It's not, it's not like taking, it's, it's falling apart.
It's not gonna affect any student space, any classroom space or anything like that.
It's not gonna be part of the,
And queen of peace, uh, the sooner we do that, the sooner we can plan for next year.
I guess my question, I mean, I did read the notes, what I'm asking, so the sixth, the money for number three is just to look at plans for what they would do, right? It's not,
Create a study.
Right.
Yes. Because they're gonna have to explore what can possibly go there, what kind of space we have to work with because that is an active area that can't be compromised by a building and you have wetlands back there. So you have concerns about whether NJDEP is gonna have to be involved. So there's a lot of things that, um, need to be done by a professional.
Because how the flow in the yard, you know, they have to make sure.
Oh, I, I understand all that. I'm just, I didn't realize that the utilization study would only look at buildings that inhabit students.
Yes.
It doesn't look at our buildings that inhabit our staff.
No.
I also just thought, um, that, so typically, and prior boards have, have asked me to look into certain things for Highlander Academy. Um, but usually you need a little bit more time than just to start, because it starts July. So, Kate, I think what you were saying, and I think when the board was having some of those discussions about utilization, you're more planning, right, for twenty-three, twenty-four? But right now, this lease is only the one year, just to get us through summer to, through next year. Just so that you understand, it doesn't commit.
So from, that's what I was looking for, is dates. So from July to June.
To June, right.
Thank you. And I think I would feel more comfortable with three, well, with definitely four, if the utilization study was on the agenda.
Twenty-three and twenty, the, number four is just for the next school year. Twenty, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, part of the resolution.
Is there any other questions about items on, under operations and finance? I, I have one comment. I wanna thank Staples for whatever the donation was.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because we can use any donations that we could have.
We do, they're typically backpacks filled with school supplies. So you just give somebody the prepackaged backpack loaded up. So they're done in the past, uh, we've, we've worked them in the past and, uh, they reached out again, uh, a few weeks ago. So we'll do it again for next year.
Well, that's wonderful and we greatly appreciate it.
I have one last question if no one else. On number two.
Number two, it says, previous recommendation was overlooked. Was it the exact same recommendation as is listed there now under recommendation one?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Which, which one?
Recommendation one, number two, under operations and finance.
Right.
It says that the recommendation was overlooked previously.
In the first paragraph. It says, cause it, conditions that caused the re,
Right, because we had staff who changed.
Oh, okay.
So it was in the prior year's audit, the June twenty, twenty audit. So it's a repeat recommendation. Um, it was not picked up when we had a personnel change. And due to COVID also.
Any other questions under the operations and finance? If not, vocal bar?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I can move number seven?
Second. Discussion? Vocal?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo? Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain.
I'd like to move eight through eleven?
Second. Discussion? If not, vocal?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes. Policy, Mrs. Stevenson?
I'd like to make a motion to move items two through fifteen.
Second.
Uh, discussion? If not, vocal?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes. Committees, parks and rec, Mr. Conklin? Are they, are they meeting or?
Yeah, I think that I wasn't able to get.
Oh, okay, I was just curious. Um, safety, um, we did have a meeting on, uh, last Tuesday morning. It, it, they were just going over a revision that they had for the drills because of some clarification that had to do with what certain drills they had to do with, you know, that they changed, like the clarification of different drills that have to be done within the buildings. No meeting is scheduled for, for, for right now. Superintendent's roundtable, Mrs. Lockwood?
Yeah, so these are the minutes from the February twenty-fourth, uh, meeting. Uh, they were taken by Calistinsiano. Uh, there was, um, a question about the strategic planning Island of Pride. Dr. Anamon asked the group about any feedback they had in regards to the strategic planning meeting and if there was any thoughts from the community of what they would like to say. Uh, he updated the kindergarten registration. There was some things about COVID, which obviously doesn't really matter right now, masks on the bus protocols. Um, so I won't say what was said on there. And then, um, link it was discussed. Um, Mr. Novak updated on that tonight, so I won't go into that either. And then there was a discussion about, um, typing keyboard in and if they're gonna be implementing, um, this into the media time for elementary schools. Uh, Mr. Novak said he discussed the topic with media specialists on Tuesday during the PD day. They're currently looking at data to back up the plan and hope to have something implemented in September for grades eight through two.
Thank you.
Oh, and there's a meeting this Thursday.
The St. County School Boards, Mrs. Dwyer?
Nothing, this one.
Uh, New Jersey School Boards?
Nothing, this one. I'll do the workshop if we're turning it off over.
We're getting back to some live meetings, which is great. Um, legislative, Mrs. O'Brien? Okay, um, I have a lot, so forgive me. On March tenth, the Assembly Education Committee advanced the following measures. Um, there were a lot of them. I just took the ones that I felt that were pertinent to, uh, West Milford School District. A three oh one requiring all school districts to submit its ener-, uh, its emergency communication policy and protocol to the New Jersey Department of Education for review. This is to ensure compliance with state laws as well as to make recommendations for improvement. Um, New Jersey School Board Association supports this. A twelve seventy-one permits one excused absence for students in grades six through twelve to attend a civic event each school year. Again, that's supported by the New Jersey School Board Association. A eighteen twenty-two requires every school district to establish a school meal fund to assist students with school meal bills that are in arrears. This fund would be established for the purpose of, of accepting donations to assist students with the purchase of school breakfast or lunch, as well as fund any arrears. Um, the association is, is monitoring that, um, measure. A thirty-one ninety-six requiring the State School Board of Education to administer the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment as a field test for eleventh grade students expected to graduate in twenty twenty-three. This bill also requires the State Board and Commissioner to use the results to assist in the development of state assessments for future graduating classes. That's also been supported by the New Jersey School Board Association. A eleven eighty-one, starting with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the eleventh graders that year, the State Board of Education will require that the low, local graduation requirements adopted by the Board of Education include the requirement that a parent, guardian, or student complete and submit a financial aid application in a form prescribed by the Higher Education Student Assistant Authority. The student, parent, guardian may submit a waiver to, uh, a waiver form to be exempted. Uh, New Jersey School Board Association is concerned about the mandatory, mandatory nature of this and is recommending that this be an optional plan. On March seventh, several legislative committees met at the State House and advanced the following legislation. All are supported by the New Jersey School Board Association. S one thirty-three permits school bus drivers to use the EpiPen to a student in emergency situations. S five twenty-eight requires additional school district personnel to complete a training program on suicide prevention. S seven fifteen establishes a commission on the effects of smartphone and social media usage on adolescents to study the extent of smartphone and social media usage in school. New Jersey School Board, Board Association will have a representative on this commission. S seven thirteen requires school districts to include information on the events of September eleventh, two thousand and one as part of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards in Social Studies and requires public schools to commemorate the day. S eight ninety-six prohibits the State Board of Education from requiring the completion of a Commission of Education-approved performance-based assessment as a requirement for teacher certification. And the school board, New Jersey School Board Association has written a position on that as well. Um, there was a webinar on March second, um, that was by the New Jersey School Board Association. And a lot of it had to do with the problem, I think every school district is dealing with is getting, hiring teachers and professionals in, in, in schools. And a lot of the, um, a lot of the discussion and a lot of the, uh, uh, laws that they wanna pass is having to do with getting, uh, people who are retired back in to the school system on a temporary basis just to kind of do a, a, you, you like, uh, trying to help out with the transition between what was going on, what's going on now with COVID and every, and everybody getting back into school and, and trying to fill in, fill in the positions that, that are sorely needed. Uh, and also another thing that was a few years ago, they had, um, made it mandatory that you had to live in the state of New Jersey to be a teacher in the state of New Jersey. They wanna pull that off the table as well. So there's a, um, I, I mean, there's a, like, another two pages I could read to you. I, I think, I think that's enough. Now, about the meeting last night, I'm gonna read the email that I received. That is okay with you, Mrs. Van Dyke? Okay. I, oops. Um, this is from Jeffrey Fisher, who is the,
He's New Jer-, he's a New Jersey,
Jersey School Board. He was a former president of the New Jersey School Board Association, okay?
And he's a board member in Manchester.
Man, okay. Um, good afternoon. Thank you for joining us yesterday to discuss the budgetary impact of the St. County PCTI on the St. County High Schools. First of all, if you are available, the St. County Commissioners will be meeting to vote on PCTI's budget on Wednesday, March thirtieth, at eleven thirty a.m. at four oh one Grand Street Patterson. County Commissioners Board Office, uh, Boardroom, second floor. I will be attending the meeting and believe it would be impactful if more local school boards could join me. In addition, here are summary points to discuss with your mayors, councilmen, school community members, and local politicians. PCTI has the highest vocational tuition in the state while receiving the seventh most in state aid. In addition, the county has not increased their share of the budget in ten years. The burden has been unfairly placed on the local school districts.
PCTI currently has a large budgetary surplus as a result of excess tuition collected. This money should be used to decrease tuition. School superintendents are looking to create programs that can be shared with neighboring districts to offer students options other than PCTI. It was a very eye-opening experience. We have numbers that were, uh, brought in to us, and we are number one, or probably will for the wrong reason in Passaic County is that we pay cost per pupil local share, local meaning school district individually, eleven thousand, two hundred and one dollar and sixty-two cents per student, and we're number one in the state.
How much was that?
Eleven thousand, two hundred and one dollars, sixty-two cents. Uh, I do have forms, I can make copies for, for the folks around the table, and it's, um...
Very interesting. So who's going tomorrow at eleven thirty a.m.?
Well, unfortunately, it's, they, they didn't get the date for the meeting until Monday. Their, their agenda for their budget was not up online last night, I'm sorry.
Their budget wasn't even online last night yet because I guess the county doesn't have to follow that forty-eight hour rule. And so he, he understands that most people are gonna have a difficult time when you tell them on, well, told us Monday that you have to be there Wednesday.
Our school allowed me to go?
I mean, we're allowed to go. I, I have a lot of things going on.
Does your calendar allow?
No, it's hard to, it's hard to get out of the middle of the day just to disappear for a couple hours.
I, I know that there are a, a few people from the meeting last night. There were probably about two that definitely were going, and he understood, and I did speak with him about that. We're gonna continue the meetings because unfortunately, uh, like what, you know, Debbie just said, the county only fund, co-, count, the county's share of their budget that they fund has been seven million, forty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars for the last ten years, has never changed, in the same dollar amount.
Did they share their surplus?
Um, China, their, their state aid. Did they share their surplus, Debbie? I didn't, I didn't, I don't remember hearing that. He said it, but I don't think it's on there.
Well, we received last night, and we can make copies.
Yeah, I, we will give everybody, Debbie, you'll...
Yeah, I have, so on one page we have the, um, figures for each school district in, in Passaic County. Um, they proposed a, what, you know, uh, how much did we get, you, how much each, did each town get? How much, is it an increase, a decrease? Of course, you know, where we are sitting, and that's a decrease. On one side is the PCTI budget revenue history. Um, and, uh, what's interesting is in twenty-one, twenty-two, um, the state aid, I don't know what E, EQ was, I mean, um,
Equalization.
Equalization, okay, was thirty, there, for them at, in twenty-one, twenty-two, was thirty-eight million, three hundred, five hundred and seventy-five dollar, no. Thirty-eight million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, and their enrollment was two, four thousand, two hundred and twenty-two students. And then for twenty-two, twenty-three, that number went from thirty-eight million to fifty-two million, fifty-two, nine ninety-seven, eight, eight thirty-five, and the enrollment is up to four thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven students.
Their state aid this year was like fifty-seven million dollars.
Because they're under adequacy.
Right. So.
I'm sorry. Barbara, what does that mean, under adequacy?
It means that they're not getting enough state aid based upon the, um, the, the tax, the taxes that they collect. Pretty much, that's pretty, because we're over adequacy, which means that, um, the reason why we don't get, we've been getting cut, um, has to do with enrollment, and has to do with because, um, we're charging, our, our tax level is too high. So it's, it's, it's a formula that they use. And, and I, I just want to clarify because we're, we're, this is live stream, that this is no way in reference to PCTI itself as the school. And that, that was the one thing that I think every person around the table last night when they talked. This is not, this is not to bash the school because we are very, you know, we are very lucky to have a, 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 a school like that, it's very, but it's, it's how the funding is happening and what's happening to the districts that are, yeah, I mean, we're losing a hundred and five students, Manchester's losing four hundred students. Um, and, and PV, which is one, you know, what's a hundred, they're losing three hundred and seventy-five. Um, Ringwood, uh, Lakeland is losing a hundred and sixteen, I think he said. So it, it, it's a bigger picture because everybody's feeling the impact, not all, it's, even, even those districts that receive state aid, like, the way he explained, Manchester received like a million dollars extra in state aid, but in loo-, in losing those four hundred students, the million dollars is walking out the door with four hundred students. And again, how we have to fund, we have to pay tuition, they have to pay tuition for each one of those students, plus they're not counted on their enrollment records. So that, that's really, it's like a combination. It's how they're funded and the cost of, the, the cost of the tuition and how we're not able to count them as districts. We lose them on our enrollment. So I, I think it's like, they're, they're trying to look at both ends, and they're asking tomorrow, what Jeff is going there to ask is he's asking for them to cut the tuition. That's what they're looking for, is they're looking for, if you receive, they received an extra fourteen million dollars. So why don't you kick some of that money back to your fellow districts who are footing the bill for the tuition? It, you know, it could help us. I don't know what will happen, he doesn't know, but he's thinking that it's worth the, the time and effort. They've been doing the, evidently, this is something that I, I was not aware of until last night, but Jeff, um, Fisher and the other man there, and I can't, I can't remember his name either, no. They have been working on this for over ten years. Like, this has been, like, on and off, and it's kind of, you know, he, th- this is probably the first time they seem to have gotten a good group of people out with them. So, and we're, we're, we're gonna move forward and we'll see what we can do to help make it happen. I, I would like to meet with Terry Duffy, our, our commissioner, who, you know, is also a West Milford resident, and have a conversation with him and see maybe he could direct us in some way that we should.
That was one of my questions, has anybody talked to Mr. Duffy? Um, my other...
Unfortunately, he's not on, he's not on the board of this, on that board, unfortunately. So that's why I didn't feel like it was pressing that I should call him today, and I didn't really get that email till three thirty today, so it was a little difficult to follow up on that.
So tomorrow, they're voting on their current budget.
That is correct.
So today, I see we only have two meetings left to go there because they have tomorrow's meeting, and then they have a board meeting April twenty-eighth, and then after that, everything, their next meeting is not until the end of May, so...
Well, their board meeting, the board meeting tomorrow is my understanding.
My, our understanding tomorrow, they're voting the budget tomorrow.
And then that's it.
And that's it, there's no, um...
And the act, that, like you said, it came out on Monday. And Mr. Fisher was hoping they would postpone, you know, if he...
That is one of the things he was gonna try, to see if they would postpone him. But... Um, I, I have to concur with Mrs. Van Dyke, it was a very interesting meeting, and, um, what I feel, and I, I'm gonna paraphrase what I said last night, was, it's like, um, the David and Goliath. Um, this has been going on for such a long time, they were talking about this ten years ago, and look where we are now. Um, obviously, I, I personally feel that, um, it's, it's not, um, user-friendly.
Um, no.
Where they, you know, how they're, how they run, how this is all orchestrated and, and, the public is informed, and it has been going on for so long that, you know, they, they think it's, it's part of their, their life, and it's, you know, part of the, a part of the process, and, and they're okay with it, but I think it's affected enough school districts and, and enough, uh, uh, enough people have said, we're done, we, we need to do something about this, we gotta take care, we gotta take care of all schools, not just PCTI, all of our schools in Passaic County.
And this forum, thi- this sheet will be helpful to you because it breaks down what is, what the, um, tuition is and how little you look, if you, if you look at the one at the bottom, the share that, that the county has to put in, you know, the individual towns in the county have to put in for Hudson is like two hundred and seventy-eight dollars per student. So when you look at the breakdown, you can see how I, I, unfortunately for us, Passaic is number one, or number two, and then a, one or two on the list, so... Right? Because they, and it has to do with also how many kids, because they, you know, it's not, it's not just a vote tech. That's the other side of this, is that their, their statistics are saying that they have a percentage of, good percentage of kids that go on to four and two-year colleges, that go into a vocational school from there. I thought they said six percent only go into the workforce when they graduate.
I, I think you're seeing more and more of schools around New Jersey like PCTI that are becoming more and more competitive to get in.
Right.
And it, like you said, it has nothing to do with PCTI as a school, nothing to do with the children or the families that send their children there. I think we also need to get more competitive, too.
There has to be a balance in, in the funding, because...
Well, that too, but I mean, like, our...
But they also have the ability to deny, you know, they say...
Sure.
They can say, no, we're not gonna take you.
Sure.
That has...
But I think...
We can do that.
Mr. Novak, doing more dual enrollment classes and all that is gonna really help our school districts.
And we're fortunate that we're one of the few school districts that did not get rid of, um, our...
We're still a comprehensive high school.
Yeah, we're still a comprehensive high school. A lot of them have, you know, that those are gone, and now they're like, they, you know, now they want them back, and it's, it's, you know, once you lose it, it, it's, it's much harder to get it back.
So we are working hard, we are putting the hours in, but we'll see, you know. It takes more than three days to turn around something, and it's like, so we're, we're working on it. Anything else?
I'm done.
I think you gave us a good point. Uh, technology, do you know if there's any thing, technology?
Uh, we met last Friday to go over, uh, our new phone system purchasing. Uh, Mr. Winston gave us something on the website process, on the web, new website that's gonna be ready to go this summer for a full opening in the fall. Uh, some other purchases, Chromebooks we discussed for a little bit, uh, we're looking at different options for Chromebooks in the future. What do we need each year for our cycle to keep our students and staff current with technology? So we broke that up into a, it was a four-year cycle, which is typically the life of a Chromebook. That's about it.
I do have a question. The phones will be up and we'll be able to have the system finished for the new school year?
That's the plan.
Wow, only been...
It'll be discussed in April, um, Operations and Finance Committee so that we can get it going.
And the website's gonna be up for the, in, for the beginning of the school year? Okay, that's good, looking forward to it. Uh, Township Board of Education Joint Committee. Uh, we, we need to probably set a meeting, I think so, yes, because there are some things here that now have come up. West Milford Municipal Alliance, uh, Mrs. Stevenson or Kate, whichever one?
Um, there's a new coordinator, welcome to Debbie O'Brien as the WMMA coordinator. I will say so far, the communication is amazing. We get weekly emails, we get, um, I, I was looking for the agenda, I was sitting here, and I was like, oh my gosh, Debbie, the coordinator of WMMA has sent me quite a few emails in the last couple of weeks, so that is really, really nice to have great communication. Um, they are working on a vision statement, a mission statement, a list of resources for the community, um, voting on a logo for the WMMA. Um, and I know that they're working on their budget and grants and filling out a lot of paperwork and, um, very busy looking to fund programs. Um, two things that I learned about in the last meeting, um, were, or, and through the good communication in the emails, is that there is a medicine drop box at the police station, and that we have a Hope van that comes to West Milford in different locations, um, which is for, um, anyone struggling with addiction to go and receive help. Um, and I know that they're looking to have it possibly at ShopRite, it has been over by the Highlands Market, up by the Utopia Deli, um, different areas. So as the township moves and has different, um, other businesses opening up with, you know, marijuana sales that you could see when you drive around town, it's nice to see that there are Hope buses too for addiction and treatment and other things working in the community, so that made me very hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, old business?
Um, I have, I have something.
Okay.
Okay, um, Barbara, thank you so much for giving us this revised budget. Um, it was a lot of work and I appreciate it, but I do have some concerns, and one is the, um, elementary enrollment, and I think what this board needs to get from Dr. Anamon is a, uh, total number of actual choice students in our elementary schools, the number of students in each school, and the current grade level that the school, the student is in. Because if these school choice kids are all in that big, big class, perhaps it's time for them to go back to their neighborhood schools, that's my first thing. The second thing is that when I went through, and Kate, thank you for asking for the high school enrollment classes.
Yeah.
When I see classes of students, elective classes, where there's only four students in a class, I, I say it's time to cut that class. I'm also concerned with the portfolio students. Some teachers have two, maybe one student in a portfolio class. What happens when those portfolios are done? What happens with that teacher? That teacher has a free period. Um, I would like to see maybe the supervisors handing the, handling the portfolio kids. Um, I, I think that, um, the, the class sizes at the high school seriously need to be looked at. The other thing I'm concerned about is that we asked about, uh, cuts in administration, they have to be fair, and, I mean, fair across the board in all cuts, and we haven't gotten anything about possible cuts in administration. So those are my concerns, thank you.
Thank you. Courtney.
I, I concur with, um, Mrs. Dwyer. I'm very concerned about a second grade class having twenty-four students in it, um, going into next year. I think that is way too much, I know it's district policy, so perhaps that needs, that policy needs to be amended, um, in policy committee because having that many students in a K-one-two classroom, especially a second grade that was in COVID, in kindergarten, just coming out of COVID in first grade, that class concerns me the most, um, in having so many students in one class. And I too ask for the administration to look at where their cuts are in their departments.
Yeah. Anyone else?
I agree, I mean, and just to, you know, I did, I read every class, I, I realize, um, the high school numbers, they don't, they look low. Um, back when I worked at West Milford High School, classes did not run if they had under ten kids, um, unless they were a special education class or an AP course. Um, so it, it is alarming to see that and to know that our elementary numbers are going up. Um, and, you know, this, this, I was glad also that I asked for it. Um, you know, our high school numbers look great, you know, they make me really happy, but if we're going to be cutting in other areas, I, it's sad that our elementary classroom where the kids are in all day are higher than most of our academic classes at the high school, you know? Um, and by most, I mean, it's definitely, a majority is, is under twenty, you know? Um, so I, I could not agree. I, I cannot believe we're running so many classes with ten kids of, outside of AP courses. I, I think AP, all AP classes should run, and special ed is just different, you know? But thank you for noticing that and for looking at it.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? Need a motion to close old business?
Motion to close old business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
New business?
I'm so excited for tomorrow night, um, at the high school, and, um, it's the art, that's, what is it called? Art and Music District Arts Festival, I can't wait, so I just wanted to mention it, and, um, can't wait to see what our kids have for us.
I'm excited to have things back in our building, and to see it alive again. So I'm, I, I am looking forward to it tomorrow night also.
Courtney?
And going along with that, Macapin put on an amazing musical, Frozen Junior. I know a lot of us were there to see it, and I just want to give a huge congratulations to the director, Ms. Rizzo, to Mrs. Catcher, Mrs. Zig. They did an amazing job, the kids are so talented, I mean, how amazing that we have such talented children in West Milford who are highlighted in our district, kudos to everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else? Need a motion to close new business?
Motion to close new business.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, time for public comment. Just so everyone knows, we're updating this.
Good idea.
Mr. Brown and I are working on this. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the West Milford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first, each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of thirty minutes, and then time permitting, other public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker until the time, the thirty-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided, give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation, and if appropriate, if appropriate, and provide your address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking, specifically comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged. The board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible to, responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment?
Is it on? Is it, is it red?
It's red?
Yes. Okay. Hello, I'm Caitlin Babcock, I'm the chairperson of our CPAC. B-A-B-C-O-C-K, live at Post Place in Newfoundland. We recently had, last Wednesday, the twenty-third, we had our latest CPAC meeting, I just want to thank a couple of our board members, Ms. Lockwood, Ms. O'Brien, who attended the meeting, and then of course, our administrators, Dr. McQuade and Dr. Anamon, who also attended. It was a long meeting, we got through a lot of really great information. Really, I'm speaking tonight because we're looking to really get the board more involved in our CPAC. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of a summary of some of the things that we talked about last Wednesday. And again, it was a long meeting, we did have a lot of stuff to talk about, so it is a little bit long, but I talk pretty fast, so it won't take too long. This CPAC meeting discussed multiple agenda items brought forward by both administration and parents. Prior to this meeting, and since March of twenty-twenty, most discussions were COVID pandemic-related. This meeting was the first in-person meeting with a virtual option for CPAC since that time. Dr. Anamon signed on to speak in regards to this and show his support for special services and serving students in the least restrictive environment. He mentioned that the teams will be reviewing placement to see where changes need to be made now that our attention is directed one hundred percent to return the focus prior to the pandemic. Parents will be involved in any discussion that is a change. A staffing update was given in regards to programs that were affected this year, specifically the CLIM program and replacement teachers were discussed. As most districts in the state, West Milford is struggling to hire special education teachers. Consistency is the goal for the remainder of the school year for students, and then looking into the future, the district will continue to seek out applicants at job fairs and through advertisements. The hours for extended school year and other summer programs were discussed, compared, and explained. It is noted that special education, special education students have the opportunity to attend programs in the some, in the summer other than E S Y. A large discussion was had about the support during extracurricular activities for our students. A question regarding the difference between school-sponsored events and PTA events was brought up, and this discussion was going to be brought up and continued during the WMPA and SRT, where more PTA representation was going to be present, which I guess will be tomorrow. Thursday, oh, Thursday, yes. It is noted that if your student would like to attend an event and you feel they may need support, contact your case manager to begin that discussion for school-related activities. Prior to COVID, there were conversations regarding improving our transition plans between schools for students who seem to struggle with changes in building, staff, routine, et cetera. This is now going to be brought to the forefront and worked on once again. Parents were curious about having conversations daily with aid staff. This conversation was informative for both administration and parents, both parties were able to share their thoughts. The district is open to hear more ideas regarding this topic, and those will be reviewed and shared at future meetings. The district practice as of now is that all formal communication with special class aid should go through the certified teacher or related service personnel. Other opportunities for our students were discussed through different grants, parents shared ideas with administration, and this discussion will continue at the May meeting. Finally, Dr. McQuade explained the process of out-of-district placement to the parents. Our next meeting is on May twenty-fourth at seven PM at the Westbrook School, right here. There will, there will be another virtual option, that was great, we had, I think it was like an even split, same amount of people in person that were virtual, so it was great. And we are also excited to know, it was a great idea that Dr. McQuade had, that some light concessions are gonna be provided by our, by our own Highlander Cove program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we can, I think I need a motion to close public comment, because.
Motion to close public, public comments.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Terry, you wanna do the executive session?
At eight forty, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, negotiations, HIBs, matters of attorney, client privilege, and student affairs.
We, we will.
And the executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege of confidentiality is no longer applicable, and we will be returning for action.
I need a second?
Second.
I need somebody. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we, uh, I would split forty-five minutes? Forty-five minutes. We will return for action. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, Barbara, could you do roll call, please?
This is Romeo.
Here.
This is Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Stillman.
Here.
This is Dwyer.
Here.
This is O'Brien.
Here.
This is Lockwood.
Here.
Mr. Conklin.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
I'd like to move approval of the recommendation on a HIB by our superintendent, incident two thousand twenty-two M-dash-ten, as substantiated.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, then, also, I would like to move that we continue to table motion, resolution number one.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna revisit this in April, at our April meeting, after we get more information on the calendar, so the calendar will be updated in, in April, at the April meeting.
You're second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, now we need a motion to adjourn.
Linda, I didn't have this information before, but tomorrow night's event is also being livestreamed, it's on the YouTube channel.
Okay.
I just found that out, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, the Old District Art Festival is being livestreamed tomorrow through our, go, go log on to our board chan, our, our board page, and you should be able to connect to the livestream.
It'll be on the, the West Milford TV Science YouTube channel.
Oh, on the YouTube, okay, on the YouTube.
TV.
Yeah, TV Science.
TV.
So, myself and Joe Jordan will be.
Okay, thank you. All right, we need a motion to adjourn?
I moved that we adjourn at nine twenty-four.
I need a second?
I'll second.
Kate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night.
Good night.